Agenda today, we have the pledge allegiance to be led by trustee BB, I'll lead the Texas pledge and mass invocation by bourbon towers.
Please join me in the pledge. The pledge allegiance
to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Follow me in honoring the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas state.
Mr. BB put pledge to the United States ahead of the invocation, but I think God is ahead of all that, so. Let me encourage you just to take your moment of meditation or prayer as is fitting for your particular faith. Father, I'm grateful that you have taught me the value of prayer, the purpose of prayer, the power of prayer. And today, right now in this place, I ask your anointing upon these who serve, upon those who learn, upon the purpose of this institution, help us to reach wherever there's a need, educate, to equip. Help us to be good stewards of the responsibility, I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
We do have a forum president day and this meeting has been recorded and members of the public may access the meeting through Texas College website. First item we're going to take up is swearing in of new trustees, Ernest Wilkerson and Charles Wakes Weaver and Sabans. Ernest, you got your receipt.
Talking to him. I guess.
Raise your mic. Who we do?
Hey, where you want me at?
I state your name.
I, Ernest Wilkerson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of Board of Trustees?
The duties of the office of the Board of Trustees, play six.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve?
And will, to the best of my abilities, preserve?
Protect and defend the Constitution?
Protect and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States?
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
No, that's, this is the oath, the other was the state. Thank you, sir.
Next item on agenda is opportunity for members of the public to suggest additional topics for discussion or address topics of interest with a presentation limit of three minutes. Does anyone present like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move to the channel's update, Chancellor?
Sir, the only update I have is that next Tuesday at the board at board meeting, we're going to take a board pictures and so everyone would be here and have a tie on and coat.
Dark suit and dark tie.
There you go.
No chinets.
No chinets. That's all I have.
Item number five is the service area continuing and adult education update, Dr. Dillion.
I guess I can flick this. It works.
Yeah, it works, but we can't see it.
Okay, note to self, make bigger next time.
We trust you.
Greetings, distinguished board members and gracious audience members. I appreciate the time given me today to share the essence of the service area adult and workforce education division, AKA SAWE, S-A-A-W-E. Let me tell you what's in store for you this afternoon. I will cover the organizational chart there that is a little bit small, but I'll, I'll run through it. Provide a glimpse of the services offered under each division unit. And then with a set of strategies designed to grow and expand the division. This slide displays the SAWE division units along with the folks who lead them. Of course, I salute the other SAWE team members who are not shown here, but who play critical roles in our enterprise. The division falls under Dr. Adi. I have an associate dean, Dr. Grego, who oversees adult education under Lorraine Juarez. Continuing education is steward by Daniel Garcia. Reporting to me directly are the four service area directors who manage offices at Gatesville. That will be Tara Lukhardt, Lampasses, Janice Allen, Fredericksburg, Christie Coth, and Marble Falls, Jennifer Koffer. Moving along, here's a snapshot of the services provided at each of the division units. Continuing education encapsulates career development, personal enrichment, and college for kids. Under adult education, we offer English as a second language, GED, HSE, preparation and integrated education and training programs. The CTC's service areas includes 12 counties. Bell, Burnett, Corial, Glepsy, Hamilton, and Passes, Lano, Mason, McCullough, Mills, and Sabah, and Williamson. The surface, the service area directors deliver community education and adult education, inclusive of dual credit courses. And also the Texas Department of Criminal Justice unit instruction, which is specific to Gatesville. Now that I've given you an overview of SAWE's composition, I'd like to share my vision for the division and what will get us there. I feel confident in stating that by executing select comprehensive strategies, the SAWE division will expand beyond current productivity and staff readiness levels. For clarification, initiatives are sorted by continuing education and service areas units. The goal here is to transform the status quo into a culture of adaptability, flexibility, and mobility. The purpose is to grow enrollments, enhance current revenue streams, generate new ones. All of this will be undertaken within the mission that is Central Texas College. And that is to provide accessible, equitable, and quality educational opportunities that promote student success, completion, and employability. Under continuing education, we have the following strategies. First one regards third-party providers. The idea here is to minimize third-party providers for the purpose of increasing profitability. Not to get rid of them completely, but rather focus their continued utilization around grant-funded opportunities. Second strategy is a SAWE retreat. I see this as an ideal forum by which to energize staff into brainstorming, collaboratively working on projects to generate division roadmaps, all in an effort toward achieving business results. I'm shooting for around mid, late June for this retreat. Advisory boards. One innovation would be to create advisory boards for CE programs. The other is joining forces with existing CTE program boards. The business industry scan is another strategy. It is imperative we conduct an environmental scan of select business sectors to determine training needs. Such information would allow us to forecast and plan programs and to design adequate infrastructures to meet those demands. Business model, central to the advancement of continuing education. We will be constructing a workforce corporate training business model by defining and refining current, current costing and pricing processes. Specifically, we will connect with focused markets, improve marketing strategies, offer prices that fit the market well, maintain good relationship with customers, current and future, and build a public reputation for quality and our team's reputation as experts in the field. Under the business model, we also will have promotional items as one of the sub-strategies. One way to increase revenue is to decrease costs. We have discontinued publication of the hard copy schedule catalog and currently utilizing QR cards. It would also behoove us to work with CTE, CTC marketing to streamline promotional items that would strengthen our brand. Service areas. First strategy includes instructional modalities. We definitely need to increase virtual course offerings. Enrollments need to place specific emphasis on certain of our ISDs, which include Marble Falls ISD, Lampasses ISD, and Gatesville ISD. We're also going to work towards increasing CTE program offerings in the service areas. We're going to strengthen current ISD partnerships by enhancing provided services such as TSI testing, TSI prep, scholarships, advising, fast track, transfer assistance, career assistance, tutoring, and also to increase our efforts in attending school events and visiting sites on a regular basis. A key strategy is scholarships. Increase the number of CTC scholarships awarded to dual credit students. Revisit the essence and status of the rural area dual credit scholarship brand. Increase promotion of the chancellor's scholarship award. One strategy that is in the making is the prison education program. The reinstatement of Pell to incarcerated students presents tremendous revenue generating opportunity. CTC via the SAWE division is seeking approval to become a prison education program within the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. We are currently undergoing the first of three stages to achieve approval by the Department of Education. In closing, regarding transformational leadership and transforming organizational culture, like I mentioned in my first slides regarding the goals of these strategies. I base my leadership philosophy on five guiding pillars that foster organizational transformation and intellectual stimulation. These pillars represent the driving force by which SAWE division staff will conceptualize, implement, and actualize strategies. These include effective communication. This entails utilizing warranted channels of communication lead it, leading to desired outcomes. In some cases, it requires two things, to be redundant, to say things in more way than once, but say it to the point that people understand. Second is to be effective in communicating means to breaking down silos. We cannot operate as successful as we would want to be if we worked in silos. So effective communication entails breaking those silos. Excellence in customer service, treating people with dignity and respect, expousing professionalism at every level. Data-driven decision management, you can't just shoot from the hip. You cannot cross your fingers and say that things are going to work. DDMM is relying on evidence to support initiative pathways. Not just numeric data, but relying on standards and policies, looking at that kind of narrative to make your argument to move forward. Specifically, in my case, is to review literature, what are best practices, what is going on out there so that I could perhaps work with my staff to implement into our culture. Strategic planning. Generating and deploying action items to optimize resources and maximize personal efforts and satisfying goals. While one may think of strategic planning as a, as a collaborative effort by several people to generate a document that outlines the pathway by which the college will be steered. In this particular case, I'm also driving attention to individuals simply thinking strategically. You are a leader of one. And sometimes things do not work as one has planned, as one has promised, as one has discussed. That is okay. But you have to have conversations that warrant you being truthful and honest and having those kinds of courageous conversations as to why things didn't work. What needs to improve? What needs to change? We need to transform. We do not want to fall victims to change. And in order to do so, we must be honest with ourselves. We must look from the inside, we must establish ourselves as transformational leaders, not victims of change. I thank you much, any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Item number six is the purchase of a new flight simulator, Dr. Barton.
Good afternoon. Last fall, we came before you all to talk about the purchase of airplanes for the aviation science program. And you may recall at that time, we also spoke about the possibility of purchasing a flight simulator, depending on how and many airplanes we were able to purchase. So today, Department Chair Abe Molina has some information to share with you and a request.
Well, I think I've been here more often than I am in the house already this past nine months, so. I think this works, alright. So my name is Abe Molina, I think you know that already, but I'm here to request the purchase of an AATD flight simulator. This is an advanced aviation training device. So the need is to provide a new simulator that will train students from the private pilot flight, intermediate flight, and commercial flight courses. The simulator will also help improve our current simulator availability to help the students complete training a lot faster. Now, one of the advantages of this simulator versus the one that we currently have, which is a Frasca Level 5, is a higher grade simulator, is that this is a low maintenance cost simulator, it was designed to be that way. The simulator will be modular, that means that it can transform into different airplanes without having to buy another simulator. I think this is a, an incredible thing. In addition to that, the company has a series of videos to do self-maintenance without having to have a maintenance technician to come over to look at a simulator, of course, sometimes something major. But this is an incredible thing that we can do because we are going to have a, or we're requesting a Piper Archer G1000. That means an airplane that we currently have in the fleet is going to be simulated by this simulator. But it can also transform into a multi-engine, and it will be an additional purchase in later in the future, but that will be a significantly less expensive purchase. Now, the also good thing about this is that the delivery time is only 1.5 months, so their production and it's not, it's not like one airplane, right, that takes several months, this one is just a one and a half. Now, the enrollment impact, of course, this is going to help us have faster course completion, and it means that more students are going to be moving through a program. And not only is going to be helping us with those three courses that I mentioned before, but our simulator, you never know, is bound to have maybe maintenance that needs to be done and needs to be put down for, for a little bit, and the simulator will be able to pick up that load and be able to be just as good. And you can see that it's modular, it's very simple. I don't know if you had the opportunity to see the simulator that we have in the hangar, this, you know, big screen and projector, so this is a lot more simple. The cost is $80,000 and the source will be the Jones donation. This is what it looks like, of course, this is a render that they provided. And the company that will be providing the simulator is called Frasca. So we have gone through the RFP process already, and now we're basically showing you what this looks like. So it's a nice and short presentation, but do you have any questions for me about the simulator?
Abe, before I make a motion to approve, I would ask you to, what? Oh, that's right, workshop.
Workshop, yeah.
Well, before I make that motion next week, before you finish today, I understand that you have a person of legacy present today to be introduced to the board.
So I would like to also mention that Becky Sparks is here present with us, she's alumni from our program, and she was also a Southwest captain.
The first captain. First. Not the first. I was the seventh girl to fly for Southwest airline. But I was also there for 30, 33 years, and worked in the trade department. And so, yes, when you simulate, I would just say this too, in this current environment where there are so many, there's such a need for well-qualified pilots, it's really important.
Thank you, Becky.
So, oh, you had this. So this one's paid for through the Jones program.
Correct.
We're still going to keep that simulator, right?
Yes, yeah. So this is to continue to help grow the program.
Will this help reduce the people that are waiting to get into the program?
This will be, it will eventually benefit that because we're going to be able to move students through the program a lot faster. So that's going to eventually benefit that enrollment requirement.
Is that exhaust, the Jones funding, or is there still some more?
There's still some more left.
Another question, Mr. Molina? Thank you, sir, appreciate your presentation. And thanks for bringing Captain with us. Congratulations.
That's right.
Yeah.
The other legend's up there with her.
There you go.
Jim Reynolds.
Jim Reynolds is not a legend.
He looks like a legend.
Oh yeah, item number seven is Lotton Vernon and Company Option Renewal, Mr. Barton.
This item for next week is contract renewal with Lotton Vernon. We're required to have an audit performed every year, and it usually starts in the June, it will run all the way through December. So they've been with us a while now. Pleased with their work, so.
And this is which extension?
I think after this year, there'll be two more years.
Two more. And you recommend that we do this, of course. You're recommending that we extend it.
And I believe the administration also does.
Yep, okay. Any question, Mr. Barton? Thanks, sir. Item number eight is the Jamal and Smith job order contract increase, Mr. Armson.
Good afternoon. As we have talked about in the past, the college is currently working on a ADA project to improve some accessibility deficiencies, and all of this came about through a an inspection that was conducted by the Department of Justice back in early 2019. I'm not going to go over any more of the history, I can certainly answer any questions regarding it if you have it. The other piece, the two contractors that we have been utilizing up to this point have been Joel's Flooring and Jamal and Smith. Both of them are job order contracts that we have been leveraging for this particular work. Over the course of the last roughly two years, we've been actively working on trying to reduce the number of deficiencies. Some of the work has, was intentionally delayed because of the amount of construction that was going to take. And we're going to be trying to accomplish as much of that as possible over the course of this summer. So with that, we had been talking with the contractor to go ahead and try to update their cost estimates on what they think that we'll be spending for the remainder of the fiscal year. To date, they've spent roughly, we've spent roughly $1.4 million, and that was out of a budget of $2 million. So we had roughly spent, I mean budgeted, $1 million per year. We planned that over a three-year period of time. So the current estimates for the remainder of this fiscal year, I gave you a list of the various projects that we're going to be focused on and what the estimated cost for each of those was going to be. But for both the interior and exterior work, we're estimating that those projections will be a little over $1 million. And so I was bringing today a total, a request to increase the total cost of the project from the, from $3 million to, it'll be 4.6 at the end of, at the project, at least is what we're estimating. So the, the recommendation is specifically going to be for Jamal and Smith to increase the contract from 2.1, which the board approved roughly two years ago, to 4.2 million. The other piece of that is we are at the end of Joel's Flooring's jock contract, and so we're not going to be able to utilize them directly for this work. And so we are going, we've already had conversations with Jamal and Smith. Jamal and Smith will be taking over the external concrete piece as well as the internal piece, which is why the amount is increasing so much for them. We'll be conducting another, our request for proposal for a jock contractor should, and then whoever the new contractor is, we may engage at that point to look at helping with some of the outside work. So I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise we'll be bringing the recommendation forward next Tuesday.
Questions, Mr. Armson? Thanks, sir. Item number nine is the recommendation of any topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements, start with Mr. BB.
I'd like to have Rudy addressing us once he gets done with the last of the legislation. See where we stand.
Okay, I've already talked to him. So it'll probably be the next workshop, we can't do it by Tuesday, but the next workshop in June. Finished up in the, with the session, 88th session in May, so.
No recommendation, but I would like to acknowledge gratitude for Mr. Wilkerson to be a part of our team and for his wife and mother to be present today, thank y'all for being here.
Mother-in-law.
Mother-in-law, okay, well, almost the same.
Nothing, sir.
Just want to say, thanks for opportunity to serve and look forward to having a great time with you guys and working to get the work of CTC done. Also, if Mr. Harman? Harmsen can, if I can get a breakdown of that contract beginning and, and how it increased from two to four million, that's all.
Well, I'm sure inflation had just a little bit to do with that.
Just a little bit.
Can I get a copy of that too, that got broke down? That'd be good to see.
That was what we buttered on last year, when we give the timeline on it, Mr. Armson.
So the, the, the current jock contract was a three-year agreement for $2.1 million. And so if the board chooses not to go ahead and increase the amount, once the allotment is spent, then the project would basically stop.
As far as the scope of the work, how, what percentage has been completed or not completed in this?
Yeah, so the, currently, we're at the Jamal and Smith. Jamal and Smith's completed about 40%, and then we're probably around 50% on the exterior work. The, the difficulty in the project, and I know that the city of Colleen has probably, has been going through something similar, is that there were over 1,500 deficiencies that were identified, and a deficiency could be as simple as that particular sign is at the wrong height, go ahead and relocate it. Or it could be that, you know, we have to look at replacing the entire dais because of the height of, you know, a particular counter. So it, it really has been a fluctuation on the Department of Justice report. Some of the deficiencies were, I walked through a building and every sign was the wrong height by the door, and I, and they just have one line item which shows us one deficiencies, but I'm replacing 15, 30, 40 signs within the building. Or it could be as simple as, okay, well, they listed out 30, 40, 50 deficiencies, one for each sign. So the 1,500 deficiencies and the roughly the 40% that I gave you is a little bit, is a little bit ambiguous. is a little bit ambiguous, ambiguous from the, from the standpoint of it's just a deficiency. The amount of work that it takes to fix that deficiency is going to vary depending upon the building and the actual deficiency. I don't know if that, it's, it's turned into a fairly substantial project. One of the things that, you know, in regards to the cost, we put together an estimated cost, $3 million came between CTC and our architectural firm. And we had a list of 100, roughly 150 pages of deficiencies. And so in order to start the project, because at the time, we didn't have a, an ILA, an architect onboard that the Department of Justice had approved. And so we basically just went through the list and gave our best guess as to what it was potentially going to cost. I've been having conversations with BBK, who's our architectural firm. And one of the comments that he's made over the past several years is that some of the school districts, and this is just, for instance, building new schools, the price has doubled. So a school that, you know, would conceivably have cost about $300 and some dollars a square foot is now around $600. And so with that, I think we're just seeing, you know, increases in concrete as we're making some sidewalk repairs, in other interior product materials and, and other types of things. So unfortunately, it's, it's, it's something that we can't go back to the Department of Justice and tell them we're not going to make it.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmson. Kind of difficult really to understand totality of the American Disability Act. If you get down to the fine line, each one of these little signs has to also be in braille, just as an example.
I understand. I used to didn't understand.
I used to didn't understand either, yeah. But crosswalks and redesigning it and the cost of concrete has more than tripled.
I understand.
If you don't know anything about concrete, you have to pour concrete at a certain temperature. And if you don't get it at the right temperature or at the right time of day, then that whole batch can't be used. And so you got all those little minions out there swimming around and trying to torpedo everything you do. And it's been, you know, difficult. In Texas, in the summertime, you'd think it'd be easy to pour concrete, but it's not. And that, that's one of the things that caused problems. And we had a lot of concrete to pour because of the handicap ramps. And in some cases, the handicap ramp goes to nowhere. But if anybody ever wanted to go that direction and we open to the public, we say, come and visit our campus. And we have activities out here like the lighting of the bell tower and all these things. We've got to accommodate everybody, any contingency you can think of. And we hadn't done that in the past. So that's, that's why it's kind of difficult to get the grasp of the whole thing. But we're working on it. And I think we're doing a pretty good job, at least from what I've been observing. So my hat's off to Mr. Harmson and his crew because they, they do a good job for us out there. And welcome aboard, nice. Glad to have you here. We're going to get six hard years' work out of you.
He may want more.
Okay, I remember 10 is announcement of the annual board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May the 23rd, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. And the workshop scheduled for Tuesday, June the 20th, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. If there's nothing else for the, for the Central Texas College District, we stand adjourned.